Hey, I'm Emily Harville and I'm a senior at Brandon High School. Would you please join me in bowing your heads for the prayer? Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the Brandon community. I pray that this meeting will be filled with beneficial conversations for our city and will lead to many great future opportunities and blessings. Please continue to open our hearts and minds to your goodness. I pray that everyone has a blessed night and that we all get home safely. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ava Abernathy. I'm a senior at Brandon High School and I'm going to be leading us in the pledge. So, Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under invisible liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Can you hear me okay? Board, we have Mr. Josh Sutton in the back, so we'll be using him for a sound board. We're going to be beating up on him a lot going forward, so he might as well get used to it. So everybody wave at Josh in the back, back there. Merry Christmas, Josh. Glad you're here with us this evening. So we have some folks here, I think, would like to make brief comments to the board and public comments. So drew straws? And who drew the long straw? Jason?
Do the longest one first, about a half hour. Does that work for you guys? Yeah, no worries.
Oh, here we are at Christmas. Okay, here we go.
We'll take it.
Thank you, brother.
Anyway, while they're passing it out, just a quick introduction. I know I've met most of you before, but Cole Lacy, Vice President with Sports Facilities Company. Just wanted to give you guys a brief overview of 2023 and kind of our goals moving forward with Brandon Parks and Rec. We stood here about six months ago outlining our goals and objectives with the city, those being to make Brandon a premier sports tourism destination in central Mississippi, expand our community impact, exceed financial performance, achieve excellence in operations, and improve communications from Parks to community stakeholders. We can come back here six months and say that we've really nailed just about all five of these objectives. From a financial standpoint, we've exceeded our projected budget revenue by thirty-five percent and by eighty percent from 2019, which is when SFC first came in. Additionally, our program revenue is up thirty-four percent, and we've been able to bring back adult softball and a brand new epic summer camp program as well for our youth. From a economic impact, we have nearly tripled from last year, up to nine million in economic impact to the community. With that being said, and the increase in revenue, we've really been able to focus on some maintenance and some upgrades to our fields and facilities with grading of the fields. Additionally, we've taken on some of the fencing. We've put new posts in the bottom to stabilize those a little bit. And you touched on the field grading, that was the big one. So the other big thing that we talked about here six months ago was to bring an event to this community that would serve the underprivileged for the kids in Brandon and surrounding communities. And this past week, we served nearly four hundred and fifty children from around the area during our Rise to Greatness camp that I think Jason was going to touch on a little bit.
Mayor Board, nice to see you again tonight. This was something we committed to bringing to you all, I think in June or July when we were here. And we're thrilled to be able to serve the community and, you know, extended region. If you recall, our mission is to improve the health and economic vitality of Brandon and the surrounding area. And this was one small way in which we could do that. So we had over twelve former major league baseball players that were here, and they were able to serve those roughly four hundred and fifty to five hundred kids. So it was one way that we could invest back into the community here, and we're grateful for the partnership with you all. You know, while we feel like we've made good progress over the last six months, we recognize there's still work to do. And that's something that we've got our focus on, but we appreciate the support from the board. And we're looking forward to a even more robust 2024, both quantitatively from a revenue visitor spending perspective, but also from a qualitative perspective in which we can enhance the programming and provide even more services to the community, including those that are disadvantaged. So is that, with that, we're happy to answer any questions, and we thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Twenty twenty-four is a million dollar revenue budget, so what is that, from eight hundred plus something? So that's twenty-five percent growth year over year. Not every year, but, well, hey, we're going to do our best. Yep, we're going to do our best.
Would you explain to the audience with the underprivileged stuff that you did at Friday, just exactly what you did do? I mean, it wasn't just saying, hey, we served and we had twelve major league kind of folks here. You gave, or you had them stuff. Would you kind of explain it to the audience, what y'all did?
Yeah, you bet. I'll start, and Jennifer, please back cleanup. Pardon the pun. So we recognize that sport is a great vehicle for character development and all of the reasons that, you know, we're collectively invested in park recreation sports. So we partner with an organization called Rise to Greatness. For those of you familiar with Perfect Game, it's the largest baseball showcase organization in the country. Something like ninety-six percent of first-rounders have gone through this organization. This is their philanthropic arm. We partnered with our philanthropic arm, and the idea is to provide access to the best programming and the best players in the country for no cost. So what we wanted to do is, on Friday, we built a clinic in partnership with them. SFC contributed financially to make it work, as did Rise to Greatness, and we brought in these twelve major league athletes. We partnered with Rawlings Gloves, so every kid that came in, they got a Rawlings glove, they got a wiffle ball bat and ball. And then we put them through a number of clinic stations throughout the day that were all facilitated by these major league baseball players. So they learned to throw properly, hit, run, field, all of that, catch from these major league baseball players, former All-Stars, big leaguers, general managers, former World Series MVP, Luis Gonzalez was here. I don't want to name names because maybe they're not, you're not fans of them all, but they all came in and just facilitated this awesome experience. So we fed everybody, and, yep, they get signed memorabilia. And the idea is that they learn to play, and they can fall in love with the game, and they can earn some confidence. And then for those that are within the area here, our hope is that they sign up for our baseball and our softball program then, and we find a way to continue to allow them to develop their character mentally, socially, spiritually, and physically through that particular sport. So that was Friday, and then Saturday, we served older, older kids who came in and did a showcase. So Perfect Game, as I mentioned, runs the largest showcase business in the country. You know, scouts, college, professional, and so we ran all of these kids through a very similar combine activity.
I believe every SEC school was represented.
That's really cool. I didn't know that. So that's what we did. And obviously, that costs money to put on and run, but we did it with our partnerships and obviously brought some of our own capital to the table as well, and we're grateful for the partnership to be able to do it.
How many tournaments have you got planned? I know you and I spoke, but maybe you want to talk about what next year the tournament schedule already looks like?
Sure. So we have a very robust spring coming. Every weekend is booked, both at Shallow and the Quarry. Baseball, softball. Softball has made a huge comeback at Shallow. It's kind of dead there for a while, but now it has come back. And it's great. We're so glad to have it.
Put more into it, too. So together we'll grow it. All right?
Happy to partner with you. Thank you. Best is yet to come, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you for coming. Good to see you.
Thank you.
And a new face.
Hello, happy holidays, Mayor Lee and the board. How are you? My name is Jennifer Kelly. I am the Vice President of Business Operations for our company called Family Entertainment Life. I'm part of the senior leadership team of our company. We are promoter and producer of family entertainment events. We have two properties. One is called Hot Wheels Monster Trucks Live. We've partnered with Mattel. We bring a Monster Truck Live, Monster Truck Show to arenas all over the US, Europe, the Middle East, Asia, Australia. We will have a hundred and twelve shows this year, and we do twenty-one Magic of Light shows. And we are very lucky to call Brandon one of our locations. We met Mayor Lee and Angela, and we feel super lucky to be here. It's such a great location for us, wonderful partner. Mayor Lee has been treated it like it's his own personal event and really welcomed the community and has worked really closely with our team. And we feel like this is a stellar event and hope that your community loves it as much as we do. And this is our second year. We've made it better this year than last year, bigger, better. We've got a holiday village. And I think that we can do nothing but grow this into a yearly family tradition. And we've got some fun plans to really bring some fun activities for the community. So, thank you.
So follow that up, Board. Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night. Friday night, we had one thousand two hundred and seventy-six vehicles come through. Saturday night, we had one thousand six hundred and thirty-two, which is the biggest night we've ever had. Sunday night was one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven. So that's four thousand vehicles in the span of three days, enjoying that from all over the country. People peel off the interstate, and it's all about promoting Brandon and quality of life that we have here, and we just want to do more of it, and really appreciate your partnership.
Likewise.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting a face to it. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board, city staff. Just to speak to both of the speakers before me. My daughter plays soccer, and so she's played at Shallow, so I appreciate what those guys do with all the Parks and Rec. And then also Magical Lights, we went through it last year. It was great. We're going to go through it again this year. But so my name is Paul Lanning. I'm with Allen Engineering and Science, and I'm going to cover the stormwater program. So there's about forty cities and counties and entities in the state that are under the Phase Two Stormwater Program in the state of Mississippi. And so I kind of have just a compliance update, and I'm going to hit about three or four points and then let you guys get on with your agenda because it looks like you have a pretty full agenda. So we manage stormwater for a few reasons. As we develop our cities, as we grow, that stormwater runoff can impact both the water quality through pollution and water quantity through flooding. And so I have a picture. I gave a presentation to Sam, and if you guys want to thumb to it, you're more than welcome to, as you have some free time. But on the third page, there's a picture of Pele Hachi Bay, and it's back from 2020. And it shows just the amount of sediment that entered that water body due to the development around it. And so that's costing PRV two point seven million dollars, and they're currently dredging this area. And I live around here, and I ride my bike and run around this area, and you can see residents that live right on the bay that can't even use their boat right now. So that's why they're doing that. So that just shows the impact of construction sites and sediment runoff. So that's, you know, one of the, one of the big reasons we have the stormwater program. And also, as I said, you know, we have more intense rain events. It seems like just, it doesn't rain slowly. It just, we have these very strong rain events, so we have some flash flooding. And so there's several programs put in place to try to reduce the flooding. So the regulatory history, this comes, it's a federal program. It comes through the EPA. EPA delegates, delegates it down to the state level through the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, and then they delegate it down to you, the city. You have the right to stormwater management plan, and then you have several items you have to address. That permit that the state issues goes in five-year cycles. The last five-year cycle ended in twenty-one. They haven't reissued the permit yet. So we're basically doing the fifth year of that previous cycle. Just, we're just repeating everything that we have done. When that new permit comes out, it's our job to review it, make sure our storm, stormwater management plan is in compliance, and if it's not, we'll rewrite it and add whatever we need to. There's six minimum control measures as a part of the EPA, anything for public education and outreach, such as like park cleanups and things like that, to public involvement, construction stormwater controls, to municipal pollution prevention and good housekeeping. I have a slide about some of the things we do for the city. It's not all encompassing. I promise you, we do a lot. But let's say DEQ came to audit the city, you know, we would print off all the documents, all the paper trail, everything proven that you've done, everything you're supposed to do. Basically, you've checked all the boxes. We also conduct dry weather screenings a couple times a year, where we drive around and we look at the construction sites to make sure that, that those contractors or developers have their silt fences in place, their construction entrances, things like that. That way, they're doing what they're supposed to do to minimize the downstream impacts. And we do various other things. I have a slide in here about illicit discharges. We have to have a specific training for your employees that work around the city related to illicit discharges, and we try to keep that presentation, it's year after year, we try to keep it fresh. And so the city of Germantown this year, unlike Mississippi and Jackson, we had like a heat dome, Memphis got a ton of rain. And so one, one weekend, a storm knocked out the power. They had a diesel generator that went online as a backup, and it started leaking diesel fuel into the, into the water course, and basically they didn't have water for a week. So we kind of present this type of things to your employees, things to look at, things like that. We have a couple slides in here about gray event structure, gray infrastructure, which is what you have right now. When it rains, it falls on your roof, goes into the gutter, goes into your driveway, goes down the storm drain, into the pipes, into, into the streams and creeks and goes downstream. Whereas EPA is really pushing green infrastructure, which basically catches the water as soon as it hits the ground through porous pavement, rain gardens, bioswells, green roofs, things like that. In our area, we have clay soils. It's not ideal, especially to use around like buildings and parking lots. But if EPA keeps pushing this, and that's one of the big things I'm looking at when that new stormwater permit comes out, is how has DEQ, how has Mississippi addressed that push by EPA to see if they're actually going to require it, or if it's still just a recommendation. So I do have one slide in the back that basically I took a site, it's basically a Walmart. And so basically applying some of these green infrastructure practices if you had to go down that route. So it's taking the back third of the parking lot and taking those parking spots into turning them into porous pavement, so they're not getting the direct traffic of the cars. It's just that outer third that's meeting your parking requirements, the, any kind of, and adding some bio-retention parking islands to catch that water, some under drains to get the water out of there because we have clay soils. So at a certain level, you got to get the water down to the retention basin. So if the city of Brandon had to eventually start implementing these green infrastructure practices, that might be one way to do it. Take the back third of the parking spaces, turn them into porous pavement and things like that. And last but not least, I'm not here to promote taxes, especially a rainwater tax, but EPA estimates sixty-seven point two billion dollars will be needed for stormwater infrastructure over the next twenty years. So forty-seven states in the United States have stormwater utilities. The only three states that don't are Mississippi, Wyoming, and Nevada. We can actually, in Mississippi, you can put in a stormwater utility, but they can't collect money. So just moving forward at the, you know, mayor and board level, the senate level, congress, that type of level, it may be something to look at down the road. Again, I'm not here promoting it, just telling you how other cities and states and counties are addressing, you know, stormwater infrastructure costs. So that's what I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
You're very kind. I know you're getting in here at the last meeting of the year to check that box, but it is critically important, especially when you do with old infrastructure like we have in many areas of the city, like Cross Gates where, you know, rusted out, car gate steel and other problems. And I've seen that when he says porous parking lots, I saw that, Chris, when we were in Elizabethtown, Kentucky. Those are blocks that are turned up on edge. Those are blocks that are turned up on edge so that water can permeate down through that parking lot and it makes a sufficient parking area. So those might be some of the things, some of those practices we'll put into. I've seen those used before. So appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
And he says it's the best for last, but I don't know. How are you, Jay?
I'm good. I'm Jay Wilson with Red Mountain Entertainment.
Who?
Red Mountain Entertainment.
Never heard of my company.
Yep.
Live Nation, right?
We have been involved with the city of Brandon since the inception of the Brandon Amphitheater, and we are, on behalf of our entire group of team members in Birmingham, are honored that you continue to trust us to work alongside your team to make the Brandon Amphitheater the premier entertainment live concert facility in Mississippi. And in a very quick six years, the Brandon Amphitheater has exploded. It's got a great reputation. Bands and tours love to play here, and we're just honored that you allow us to be a part of it. Our teams work incredibly well with the city of Brandon's team. We mesh seamlessly. Angela Pryor runs the day-to-day operations, and she works with our team, and it's, we couldn't ask for anything more. We get along great, and the city staff has really learned what it takes to produce a show at the highest level, which are the quality of shows that y'all are doing here in Brandon every year. Every day, we have 18 people in Birmingham that think about and work hard for the city of Brandon, from five people that book shows, two people that do ticketing, four people that do marketing, two production people, accountants, contracts, insurance. It's a full team effort, and we're thinking about this facility and the volume of shows and what shows we can bring every day. It's a commitment that we've made, and just to read some of the shows that we've done in the first five years, just a really short selection. Chris Stapleton's played the venue twice. If he didn't have a great day the first time, you would have never seen him again. The fact that he wanted to come back a second time is testament to not only the facility that was built and the quality, but to the staff and the way that they treat all these touring, you know, Chris's family and the tour crew. James Taylor played here the first time, first time this year. We've been trying for years to get James Taylor. It was one of the best shows that I've seen. Dave Matthews Band's played here twice. Again, if he didn't have a good time the first time, he wouldn't have done it. Imagine Dragons, big, huge show. Kenny Chesney played here. I think he had 15 semis in the back, and the mayor was out there trying to figure out how to park the trucks. And then one of the last shows we did, which we're the most, one of the most proud of, is we had Lana Del Rey play Brandon, Mississippi, which, when we knew that that show was going to happen, we all were high-fiving each other because we knew that it was a coup to get her to play Brandon. She actually wanted to play Brandon. She requested it, and we just knew that it was going to be great. It sold out in one day. And she absolutely was blown away by the whole venue, everybody at the venue. She loved Brandon, and in fact, she blew up her social media for the following week after that show, where she was posting pictures of backstage and hanging out. And, I mean, one of the posts had a million likes on it, and she was tagging Brandon. And, you know, and so for an ethereal, mercurial, unbelievably, you know, talented superstar to come to Brandon and be treated like that and leave here with that kind of memory, I think speaks volumes for what's going on in this community and at that venue. Red Mountain is transitioning in two weeks to become fully Live Nation. That shouldn't scare you. We've been Live Nation for six years. We've had a joint venture where we've basically been plugged into Live Nation's world for six years. You're going to see zero change. Nobody's leaving. The same team of people that have been here throughout this whole process are going to be the exact same people, and there's going to be no drop-off, no change. And we just look forward to continuing to put a big, bright spotlight on the Brandon Amphitheater and showing the touring world how great of a place this is to play. Anybody got any questions?
I'll ask the same question here. Where are you going to go from here?
What's that?
Where are you going to go from here? What can we expect in '24?
We're just going to, you know, I've told everybody over the years, it's a very cyclical business, and sometimes you get a lot of country acts one year, sometimes you'll get more rock acts. It's all just the way that the business unfolds itself each year. But, you know, our goal is to try to increase show count, and, you know, we average probably 15 to 17 shows a year. We have, I think, nine shows on sale right now. We've got another three or four confirmed that, I can't tell you who they are yet, Mayor. But we are tracking towards doing at least 20 shows this year. So we feel like it's going to be another robust year, and, you know, we're just, we're thrilled with how, when we bring big artists here, how we can trust y'all to make us look good. And that's really the most important part of this business is trust. Because if the trust wasn't there and things weren't happening, the bands wouldn't come here.
Okay, great. Who you got with you back there?
Got Alex Coley and Jim Trotter. Alex is the glue that keeps our company together, and Jim is, he's the guy out there that making all the sponsorships and box seat and premium seat sales happen, and we got a great team.
So Jim's working with Josh and updating box seats, and I wonder what the likelihood is of any coming open this year might be.
Well, as you know, our turnover per box seats is very, very, very small over the past year. We only had one turnover last year, and it's looking that it's going to be a similar situation this year. Our deadlines, people let us know their tip for new is December 31st, and the money is due January 31st. So we know your schedule.
Okay. Board, you got any questions? Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Merry Christmas.
Board, they made themselves available up front this morning to any box seat holder or advertiser or sponsor that want to interact with them on how to improve what they're doing or what we're doing, and they did have a few people stop by and visit. Anyone else in the room like to make public comment for the board tonight? If not, we'll move on through the agenda. Like to ask for, let's see, approve the regular board in any minutes of December 4th, 2023? Is there a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack. Second, Mr. Chris Vinson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Board, I'd like to somewhat combine one and two since they're similar. I'm not going to read those verbatim unless you want me to, Counselor. Mean lady. All right, thought we got rid of a mean attorney. All right. Consideration to adopt a resolution declaring the intention of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Brandon, Mississippi to issue general obligation bonds of the city in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3 million to raise money for the purpose of constructing, improving, and paving streets, sidewalks, and walkways, and purchasing land thereof, establishing storm and drainage systems, and repairing and improving, extending the same, and constructing bridges and culverts as authorized through the laws of the state of Mississippi, directing the publication of notice of such intent and for related purposes. So that's kind of a catch-all to say what we're going to do with this money, just in case there's some in the end, and we've got some flexibility to do something other than improve and repave streets. On number two, consideration to adopt a resolution hiring legal counsel, which Ms. Sue is sitting right here tonight. Hello, Ms. Sue. Glad you're here. Thank you for coming. And a municipal advisor in connection with the sale and issuance by the city of Brandon, Mississippi, and general obligation bonds of the city in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3 million and for related purposes. Now, audience, the reason why we are borrowing $3 million is to add it with $2 million that we have set aside in this year's budget that we can find, that we get from our infrastructure improvement fund. And so this is really, if you look at a $5 million project, and we have $2 million cash that we're going to put toward it, and we're going to borrow $3 million. That's it in a nutshell. So Board, I presented you with, we'll get to that in a little while, though, voting on the specific streets, and I'll talk more about that at that time. But long and short of it is, we're working on 73 streets and paving approximately 17 miles. Wait, shakes out. So can I get a motion to approve one and two, or are there questions? Motion by Mr. Luke Coker. Second, Mr., who said that down there? Craig. All right, any questions on that conversation from Mr. Baker? Counsel, are you happy?
Happy.
It's all about you being happy. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Number three, consideration to adopt a resolution in the city of Brandon, Mississippi regarding Segment Three of the East Metro Corridor in Rankin County, Mississippi, and authorize the mayor to execute the same and authorize payment in the amount of $300,000 to the East Metro Corridor Commission. I want to keep this one separate, Board, and I want to explain it to you. I gave you a sheet that looked very similar to this about how we were going to fund streets. Ms. Bean and I went back and forth. In November, there was $300,000 in here. I have taken it out of this, and I'll be glad to reprint this for you. We ran the numbers and went over it with the clerk and the city accountant, and it has no impact on it. There are two issues before the commission. One issue is what this is about, which is this is a unit price contract, meaning if the cost of asphalt goes up and the contractor buys that asphalt to put on the ground in the project, we're required to make up that difference as a commission. So we're all putting, that's part of this contract. Another issue that they have before them, they're claiming is days. We feel like that we're going to challenge that because we've given them 38 extra days that they've used to complete the project. And the last thing I want to say is, Board, I sent you over the weekend an invitation. Sent it to Marcus as well. We're doing a ribbon cutting on East Metro Friday morning at 10:00 a.m. Everything's lined up for that. We invite anybody and everybody that'd like to attend that to show up. We'll have ample numbers of blue and red lights out there to direct parking and be careful of public safety. But this $300,000 is something we're going to have to do regardless whether we like it or not, because it's part of the unit pricing of the contract that East Metro did with Yates Construction. Okay? Might be some more in the future, may not, but this is one step toward getting it done and getting that roadway open and functional. So if that explains it well enough, I'd like a motion to where we can move forward with Motion by Mr. Jared Crane. Second, Mr. Luke Coker. Any questions, conversation about that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. All right, let's see, I'm going to take four and five together. Number four, consideration to approve a professional services agreement between Live Nation Worldwide Incorporated and the city of Brandon in regard to the Brandon Amphitheater and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number five, accept resignation from event services coordinator Carly Keys effective December 18th, 2023, and change employee status to part-time runner at the Brandon Amphitheater and set rate of pay according to the memo. And is Ms. Carly hiding back there in the back? Yeah, you want to say? I can't speak for them, Carly. All I can do is speak for me and say, I love you and I appreciate you. And you're not going anywhere, Board, you're still going to see her friendly face. So, all right. Is there a motion to approve those two items, Board? Motion by Mr. David Ferris? Second, Mr. Dwight Middleton. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. All right, Ms. Angela.
May I take all four items together?
Yes, ma'am.
The first item is consideration to correct minutes from 10:16:23. Items 8:11 and 8:12 to accurately reflect board action to reject commodity bids for fluoride and re-advertise for same due to Scribner's error. Number two, consideration to accept the municipal depository bids received on December 11 and award to Community Bank as the designated municipal depository for '24 and '25, and authorized, and approve the authorized signatories in accordance with the memo. Number three, consideration to approve pay increases for concert and event runners effective Tuesday, December 9th in accordance to the memo. Number four, consideration to prove the docket of claims for December 18, 2023, Fox Everett claims released on December 7 and 14, and the electronic transfers for October and November 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. Is there a motion to approve those four items? Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack. Second, Mr. Jared Crane. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. Ms. Keys.
Hello, Board and Mayor. I have four items. May I take them all together?
Yes, ma'am.
Number one, consideration to approve the professional services agreement for a purpose of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521, authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all share-related expenditures. A, Live Nation Worldwide Incorporated for a performance by Brian Regan on Wednesday, January 10th, 2024 at City Hall Live. B, BB Touring LLC for a performance by Breaking Benjamin on Friday, January 26th, 2024 at City Hall Live. C, Keith Wallen LLC for a performance on Friday, January 26th, 2024 at City Hall Live. Number two, consideration to approve deal point memo and additional terms and conditions with Creative Artists, Artist Agency for an amphitheater performance on March 20th, 2024, and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number three, consideration to extend the following agreements for the 2024 concert season at the Brandon Amphitheater, or at the city of Brandon, City Hall Live venue, and authorize the mayor to execute the same. A, justice security for City Hall Live event staff and security services. Number four, consideration to extend the following agreements for the 2024 concert season at the Brandon Amphitheater and authorize the mayor to execute the same. A, justice security agreement extension of the Brandon Amphitheater. B, MVS agreement extension for the Brandon Amphitheater. C, Janet King of Jackson Agreement extension at the Brandon Amphitheater.
Thank you, Ms. Carly. Yes, sir.
B and C are the same dates, is that true?
For which number?
For B and C. You got Breaking Benjamin and Keith Wallen.
For number one?
Oh, number one, yes. They're performing at the same date.
So it should be January 20... Give me one second. It should be January 25th and 26th.
Breaking Benjamin is the 25th.
Correct, and then the next one will be the 26th. So Breaking Benjamin should be the 25th.
All right, so Breaking Benjamin's breaking, that's a Friday, January 26th, and the second...
No, 25th.
And this next one should be Saturday, the 27th?
Correct.
Should be Saturday, the 27th.
It should be Friday, Saturday, yes. 26th and 27th.
All right. All right, Board, generally on City Hall Live, the target is 14, at least 14 shows at the amphitheater and eight somethings in City Hall. And so that's the target for entertainment, and it might be more. We'll see. Thank you, Ms. Carly. Thank you for catching that, Dwight. All right.
That's all.
Is there a motion to approve those four items? Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack.
Second.
Second, Mr. David Ferris. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Ms. Carly.
Good evening.
Hang on a second.
Yes, sir.
I don't have it on mine. That's another Ms. Angela Bean getting me. Hold on just a second, Paul. We all know Mark set you up. We got them. Yeah, oh, yeah, right? All right, back on track. Here we go. All right, back on track. Here we go. All right, Paul, go ahead, sir.
Um, I'd like to take number one by itself and then take two through six altogether, please.
Yes, sir.
Um, number one, consideration to accept the bids received on November 30th, 2023, for the, for the 2024 street overlay and paving project, and award to AdCamp in the amount of $5,377,885.01, as the lowest and best bid received, uh, and authorize the mayor to execute all contract documents.
Thank you, Board. Uh, thank you, Paul. Board, if you notice, that's 5.3 million. And there are two parking lots in here that are coming out of our 2% fund for, uh, tourism, recreation. So that's where the rest of that money's going, coming from to fulfill this bid. All right?
The successful completion of the bond issued referenced in 5.1.
Correct.
All right. Satisfied, Counselor?
I am.
All right. Is there a motion to approve that, uh, street resurfacing plan?
How many miles did you?
17 miles.
So how long have, I know I've just been on three years, but how long have we been resurfacing since you've been on the board?
We, this, by my count, I sat, sat down with Tim Martin the other day, has done a lot of the GIS. So I believe this puts us over 100 miles in the last eight years. Uh, two years ago, we did a big resurfacing plan. It was over 20 miles. But, uh, we're getting to the point where we'll be able to, in just a couple of years, be able to designate 1.2 to 1.5 every year. Uh, so, uh, this really puts a big lick on what we need to do.
And are all these streets worst, or first?
Uh, the majority of them are, yes. Some of them are, uh, location oriented. In other words, beginning to gator up and crack up. And we're trying to reach a point where we go into a place, uh, Windsor Ridge would be a good example of that, rather than going, or Sun Chase would be another good example of that. Rather than going in and doing two streets and coming back two or three years later when you can afford it and doing two more streets, to be able to try to get to a point where you do the whole subdivision at one time and be done with it. Uh, we're almost to that point. We're not quite there yet. Legacy would be another good example of that. Uh, you can't do all of Legacy right now. One, one half doesn't need it as badly, but the other half, we're about to get into some problems. So we'll do the eastern side of them. Uh, other long streets in here, which we've got some long streets coming up in the future, Lewis Wilson would be one, Trickle and Bridge would be another one, but we're hitting two long ones here, meaning from the three-way stop on East Gate all the way to 80, and then from the three-way stop on, uh, Woodgate all the way to Cross Gates Boulevard. So that's Cross Gates Drive. That's a long pull through there as well. Really needs it. Got a motion to approve? Uh, got a motion by Mr. Luke Coker, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Any further comment or question? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like comment. All right, go ahead. Thank you, Board. Two through six.
Number two, request permission to proceed with the development of plans and authorization, and auth, uh, sorry, authorized publication of a bid notice for the sidewalk project on East Gate from Highway 80 to the first bridge. Number three, consideration to accept the permanent drainage easement for 169 Fern Valley Road. Number four, consideration to approve invoice number 1407 from Sullivan Construction Services in the amount of $7,750 for, sorry, for the Bella Vista Entrance Drainage Improvement Project, which was previously approved by the board on November 20th and completed on December 9. Number five, consideration to approve pay request number 10 in the amount of $241,341.01 from Thornton Construction Company for the Grants Ferry Parkway Sewer Line Extension Project, and authorize payment of the same. And number six, consideration to declare an emergency, the evaluation and repairs to the Highway 468 well by grinder drilling.
Uh, thank you, Paul. Is there a motion to approve items two through six? Motion by Mr. Harry Williams. Second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Any further question, comment?
I have a question for Matthew after we vote for this.
Okay. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. All right, Matthew, come up to the podium, please.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but can, you have any update on Clearwater when they plan to?
Yeah, we discussed it, um, last week, last board meeting, maybe you weren't here, but they've, uh, they've completed all their contractual items. We had a punch list and got through their punch list, and they've been completing all those and knocked those out. Only thing they've got left from a punch list standpoint was a piece of five-foot by four-foot concrete sidewalk that they replaced last week. And after they replaced it, somebody decided to walk through it.
Yeah, I saw that, so.
So they got to dig it up. They, they know that.
So they basically are done?
They're done. We got to get that, we got, they got to fix that. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that what that pile of con, was that what the pile of concrete was they dug up, I guess, to replace it?
Where at?
On Woodgate?
No, this was down, but we had a little section that settled down, um, downtown. That was separate. They fixed that. It was some stuff that had settled. They fixed that as well on Woodgate.
Okay.
But, um, and they had a piece of sidewalk in front of the church that had cracked, and they replaced that. That's the piece, that's the pile of concrete you're talking about. And they got that cleaned up. Um, but yeah, they got all the punch list items done.
So they're doing it. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Harry. Appreciate that. Thank you, Matthew. All right, Sam?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've got two items. I'll take them separate.
Yes, sir.
Item number one, public hearing and board action regarding conditional use application for above-ground utilities for thrash forestry suppliers. And again, this is the same thing that we went through on, on the same exact development for consolidated pipe, but we have to take it parcel by parcel, because we didn't have all the information for forestry suppliers to do those public hearings the same evening.
Counselor? Mike, it's yours.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of?
I don't believe so.
Or opposing it? All right, so we're just going to close the public hearing at this time.
Okay.
Recommendation from, recommendation, recommendation from community?
To approve it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, Board, I believe we've, uh, had conversations concerning this before, that the above-ground distribution lines along the street would be above ground, and then from those distribution lines to any buildings that come in would be below ground.
That's right. Composite poles for the distribution line, I think it's two poles total there that covers both of those projects. Um, and then the service lines will be subsurface.
All right. So we've had the public hearing, and public hearing's closed. Now it's a motion to approve that. Motion by Mr. Luke Coker, second by Mr. Ms. Sharon Womack. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Number two?
Number two, consideration to approve a comprehensive sign plan from Wilson Kia. Basically what this is, general description would be that they wanted to add an additional 36-foot square foot sign on the south side of the building, which would be facing interstate, facing the interstate, uh, which would, they would exceed our signage requirements by 36 square feet. But I believe, or our recommendation would be to approve it based on the lack of road frontage there for advertising purposes. It'll be a wall-mounted sign. It won't be on a pole or anything like that, so.
Okay. All right. Board, is there a motion to approve that request? Doug Wilson? All right. Uh, motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. Jared Crane. Any further questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, sir. Chief?
Good evening. Uh, may I take two items as one?
Yes, sir.
All right. First item I have is request permission to hire Sarah Jones, who's present right here with me to my left, as a communications officer effective November 19, 2023, and set rate of pay in accordance with the memo. Uh, oh, December, I'm sorry. Um, number two, accept the resignation of Patrolman John Will Boyd effective December 16, 2023, the resignation of Patrolman Taffy McGruder effective December 11, 2023, and the resignation of Assistant Chief Marshall Pack effective December 11, 2023.
All right. You ready to go to work?
Do what?
Are you ready to go to work?
Oh, yeah. I've been ready.
All right, good.
Sergeant, uh, Ray Midge actually called me earlier today, and she's like, you know, you have that board meeting. And I said, I already know this. I've been knowing this for two weeks. I'm ready. She's like, how do you feel about working tomorrow? I said, let's get to it, so.
All right, welcome aboard. Is there a motion to approve these items? Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack. Second by Mr. Harry Williams. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Hey, Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, Shelby Circle. I've yet to see any signage or anything on those, uh, illegal U-turn.
Chief, you might, you and Paul might, not you, you stay there. You and Paul might want to walk back up to the mic, please. So the question is on Shelby Circle, we've got some people doing an illegal U-turn, trying to jump the line, getting in line at Brandon Elementary. You remember, have we had a chance to look at that yet?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Yes, sir. We met at the chief's office, uh, was it Friday?
Uh, it was Thursday or Friday of last week.
Yes.
And, uh, we were looking at the illegal U-turn and the garbage of it. Would it actually be a U-turn if they turn around into the driveway and then back out? Or would it be a turn around?
They turning around.
So we're looking at making a sign where pretty much do not pull in here and turn around instead of the U-turn. So, and the placing that up there would be a little bit more clear than a U-turn into the driveway, so.
Well, Jared's right. It's, it's a safety hazard, somebody, sooner or later or something, you know. And it's just people that get impatient, try to jump the line, is all it is. So.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how you want to police that, because a sign might slow it down, but they still going to do it. So I don't know if that means intermittently.
Got a daycare.
An officer there, some distance away that can say, come here and.
Yes, sir.
Put some ink on you. And, you know, a couple of those would probably, that deterrent would probably stop the majority of it.
I'll put somebody out there tomorrow morning?
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you working on the sign, Paul? Okay.
Thank you.
You good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and take all three of mine together.
All right, sir.
Y'all are good with that?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, permission to approve myself and Division Chief Jerry King to travel to South Haven, Mississippi to attend the annual Mississippi Fire and Structures Association Training Conference. Item number two is consideration to approve the agreement between University of Mississippi Medical Center and City of Brandon Fire Department for a fit for duty physicals. Item number three is request permission to repair and replace the brakes on a 2007 Pierce Aero, and authorize the payment of the same.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve those three items? Motion by Mr. David Ferris, second by Ms. Sharon Womack. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you all.
Ho, ho, ho. We don't need an executive session. So, motion to adjourn, please. Pardon me? Shoot. Okay. Ms. Bean wants to go back on the record, since this is a public meeting, and fix, uh, the question that you had, Dwight, concerning item seven, uh, C. Keith Wallen is actually an opening act that same night. So it's two different artists on the same night. So what was printed was correct. Yeah. So, anyway, we got sideways in there somewhere. The 26th, that's right. They're both on Friday, January 26th. There is another show the next night. That's right. Those two are together, same night. All right. We need to correct that, Counselor? Are you satisfied with that? All right. Thank you, Ms. Bean. Now you want to talk about Board? No. I was waiting for one. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All right, Board. Merry Christmas. God bless. Be safe. And see you Friday morning. Look, if you would, try to get there at 9:30, and I'll get you parked somewhere. The, most city employees are going to be parking across the street and walking over there, because it's just, if we put a whole line of, well, you can, you can if you want to, but you're liable to be.